Robin Hensel, 307 First Street Southeast. It's been years, maybe more than a decade, since Little Falls Comprehensive Plan was updated. I know because I attended many meetings in the last four years in Jerry Lock and hammered this point at eight, that it was long overdue for the city to update its comprehensive plan. It is a concern of mine and I think numerous other people that the comp plan has not been updated. I believe it should be. Good planning practices will prevent appearances of spot zoning. In fact, appearance to the standards and an up-to-date comprehensive plan describing the intended use of the land, which is in the best interest of the community, virtually eliminates the problem with spot zoning. Spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a larger zoned area when this rezoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restrictions. Spot zoning may be ruled invalid as an arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable treatment. Spot zoning makes unjustified exceptions that benefits a particular owner while undermining the pre-existing rights and uses of adjacent property owners. Generally zoning is a constitutional exercise of a state's police power to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, spot zoning or any zoning enactment would be unconstitutional to the extent that it contradicts or fails to advance a legitimate public purpose such as promotion of community welfare or protection of other properties. Spot zoning would be a constitutional exercise of zoning power by a local zoning authority if the state zoning-enabling law now allows spot zoning. Conversely, spot zoning may be an invalid exercise of a local authority's zoning power if the state zoning-enabling law prohibits spot zoning. Contract zoning occurs when a local zoning authority accommodates a private interest by rezoning a district or a parcel of land within that district. Then the private interest may then be allowed to develop the land where before the zoning regulations prohibited such a land use. I'd like to state to this council publicly that in that I was not contacted by any person from the city. I did, as promised, report the illegal, in violation of the city's own policy, of using public city equipment on private property. The numerous months or years of street sweeping, snow plowing, and other maintenance on a private road owned by Mike Corle and Jerry Thomas. I have reported that to the state auditor's office as of last Friday, as promised. They will be looking into this matter. It's a stream issue.
Just a minute, sir, up, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Now we'll go on to regular agenda items. City Administrator search update. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Good to be back with you tonight. Tonight, the task before the city council is a selection of finalists to continue along in the interview process for your city administrator. Provide a little background information. On May 18th, the council approved moving forward with the posting. The position was posted on, starting on May 19th and continued through June 16th, 2015. There were a total of 27 applicants for the position. And those candidates were initially ranked based on background and experience. As part of the process and the service that I provide, I interviewed the top nine candidates for the position. And those interviews were conducted between June 19th and June 23rd, 2015. So the awkwardness of the meeting tonight, for your benefit and the benefit of the public, is that these types of processes, the names of any applicants are non-public information until they are selected for interview by the appointing authority. The appointing authority in this case is the city council. So throughout the course of the discussion this evening, it is very important to you to process that no identifying information be publicly shared about any of the candidates. And you have before you a numbering system. We will talk about people as candidate number one through nine and so on. Quirky, uncomfortable maybe, but it is the law that is before us. So, and the council has background information, including all the application materials, as well as a summary of my individual interview with each of the nine individuals that were selected. Again, I want to just reinforce that it's important that we talk tonight about folks utilizing the number rather than their name and also not to mention any identifying information about any of the people, even identifying information other than the name. So the couple of things tonight before you. First of all, is a selection of those individuals that you'd like to bring in. Secondly, is a discussion of whether or not this is a continuation of the last time I was here, whether or not you want to grant any sort of compensate, well, not compensate, reimbursement for expenses for candidates that have to travel here, possibly stay overnight. And then talk about the interview components that you would like to include as part of the interview process. And then that will in turn drive the length of the interview, whether that's a one-day interview process or a two-day, either of which is certainly entirely up to you. So the first thing I'd like to just do is go through, each of you have a, the list of the candidates, again, using the numbers. I would like to just simply go around and ask each of you for the people that you ranked in your top three initially. And then we'll take that down. Lori is going to help you with making sure the math is right. We'll go through that initially and then see, maybe there is a logical cutoff point. Maybe you all agree on all three of these people and it's a very simple process, but that would be the starting point. So is that okay to proceed that way? All right. So first of all, I just, I have council members alphabetically. So what I'd like you to do, yeah, you're last. I could flip it.
Any history of that?
Yeah, I could flip it, you know. I was, I was usually last too, except when there was a Z. So first of all, again, I'd just like you to say what your top three numbers are that correspond to the candidate. So first of all, council member Boyum?
One, three, and five.
All right. Go Zach.
Five, seven, three.
Hemler?
Six, three, four.
Hanson?
Seven, three, four.
Perkak?
Five, three, seven.
Nafla?
Five, four, three.
Littlebrue?
Five, four, three.
Enzilia?
Three, seven, four.
All right. So we're going to just take a second and try to tally these numbers up. So if you just bear with Lori and I, she's probably way along in the processor, so that's good. Lori, how you doing?
Done.
All right, why don't you, let's just, candidate number one, how many times?
One.
Two?
Zero.
Three?
Eight.
Four?
Five.
Five?
Five.
Six?
One.
Seven?
Four.
Okay. Eight?
Zero.
I'm sorry. Nine?
Zero.
Okay. So let me just repeat the numbers back to the council. General agreement on, few of these folks. Candidate number three had a total, was listed a total of eight times. Candidate number four was listed a total of five times. Candidate number five was listed five times. And candidate number seven was listed four times. And then beyond that, we have two candidates that were listed once. Is that right, Lori? Candidate number one and candidate number six were listed once. So really what you have is four candidates that are, you know, somewhat stand out from that group. And then a couple more that are mentioned by at least one of you, but not more than one. So it seems to be that based on your numbering, those top four would obviously be of interest. You wish to go, to talk about candidate number one and candidate number six? To see if there is any benefit or merit to bringing either or both of those folks in?
Mr. Trump, may I?
Yes.
I did meet candidate number six. That was impressive. And in a different venue, wasn't it? And this, but it was back when I was at the city managers conference trying to draw support for people to apply for the position. And he does have this, of course, experience in the community that he works in. Just a blind plug, I think he's a very bright, energetic young administrator. And I think he would be, as far as I'm concerned, I think he would be, he would marry it. Only one of you mentioned him, so.
He was my judge. I'm just, okay. The thing, you know.
I'm just telling his story.
There's not a lot of experience. If you're a little, you know, territory rated lowest, but I think it's really a candidate.
I had a three-way tie for a first spot, and he was one of them. Took enough to kind of experience.
Certainly no harm in bringing five people in instead of four, if that would be your wish. Other comments or any thoughts?
My concern was the experience. And not that, you know, sometimes you find a jewel in the rough. But I, you know, we've had so many changes here in the last, and I know there's more to come, but we've had changes. As I read some of his professional experience and the amount of experience, two things that I weighed heavily was the amount of experience and where the experience was with size of communities. You know, if they've had a $3 million budget or a $25 million budget. And I know it's hard to get somebody with a large budget from a large community to move up here. So I tried to balance those things. But with that said, I'd be comfortable. Sometimes you can learn a lot while people are interviewing. If they pick up a day or two. I was the one that was, it's called an opus, is one of the most important jobs you have. I gave them this opportunity. As you can tell, I'm losing my voice, so you're all fairly fortunate because it's going to be God's sake.
Any other, again, I think, I usually recommend to stay at five or less. Again, having that, including that individual would certainly be at that number. So that's something you wish to, you wish to do? Your process except another interview.
So just a review of the five?
So, yeah, let's go through those again. Candidate number three, candidate number four, candidate number five, candidate number seven. And then also this discussion has been about candidate number six. So three, four, five, six, seven. What's your consensus? Do we want four or do we want five or?
I think going for five wouldn't be that much harm. It's like Greg was saying, a young person, but you know, sometimes you can look at that on paper, you just can't read the person as much as if you see on face to face. Like that, these, look at this guy. I had a rank close up there. Wasn't one of my top three, but was right after that, so. You'd have to see this person in the interview.
I had four, sixty-seven title.
So it seems like that would be, like that would be warranted based on this conversation that you just had and everyone had fairly close and comfort level there. So I don't know what your protocol is as far as if you need to do a motion on that or?
We don't need a motion at this point, no. I don't know. We talked about that. If, I mean, if you're okay with, you've got a consensus of the council. I don't know that it needs to go to the main meeting, from a technical standpoint that I know of, to choose a group of candidates to interview. So if we have a consensus at this meeting, I think Gary's got his direction to contact those people. I would assume that after you contact them and after they agree at the interview is when their interview call.
Well, here we get something that one of the candidates is, I was for another job, is that one of these?
That was five.
Yeah. So it might be down to four.
So that's a very, that's a very good one. Yeah.
Otherwise it'd be down to three and a hurry.
Yeah.
That would really be bad.
Right, right. So, okay. So if you're comfortable moving forward that way, that would be, that would be wonderful. The next thing I wanted to just touch base on was this expense reimbursement. You had talked about that last time. Now, now we're at a decision point on that. Either you wish to do something or not, your call. I would, if you do consider something, my recommendation is that that simply be a capped amount and then it's an up to amount, so people turn in their expenses to you. It's not like you're just giving them a dollar amount. They have to incur the expenses and then be reimbursed for that. Or you do nothing. I don't think you had resolved that question last time. I guess I'm, now I'm looking for a little more definiti, definiti on that to see if you wish to do that. Because when I'm talking to people, it would be nice to be able to say yes or no to that question.
Gary, what's your experience with that and do you think it's a deal breaker?
It's not a deal breaker by any means. Some communities choose to do it, some don't. You know, I think, maybe I should have changed the order here because if it's a two-day process, then it may make more sense to just at least pay a one-night hotel, for example, because in most cases, people will probably have to stay here or nearby. But if it's a one-day process, you know, then it's much less significant. So there isn't a right or wrong answer and everybody does it different. I mean, I wish I could say here's the pattern, but there isn't.
Well, it looks like to me every one of them is within three or four hours' drive.
Yeah.
So if we're going to do anything, it'd be a one-night hotel or?
And a separate hotel stay, I mean.
We're going to give them two nights, two days?
Even if we're not, I mean, what time is it going to start in the morning if somebody's coming from four hours away and the interview's at nine o'clock in the morning? Well, maybe, maybe we should talk about that piece and then, and then double back to the reimbursement piece? Because that, that's a great, that's a great point. The, what time the interviews start really depends on what components do you wish to include? For example, one of the options for you is to individually, each of you, interview each of the candidates. Now with eight of you and five of them, that becomes a process that'd probably take three or four hours to accomplish. I mean, I haven't put a pencil and paper on that, but that's just a guess with the numbers there. So if you're going to include a component like that, I would say definitely you'd be looking at a two-day process. If that component isn't necessarily as important, then maybe it's a, starting at nine o'clock in the morning or something and then ending sometime early evening, which might include some interaction with department heads, a lunch, a tour of the community that's nice for candidates to see the community, a guided tour with somebody that knows the community well, police chief or Lori or, you know, whoever. So those are the kind of things that I would encourage you to at least consider as part of the interview process. And then maybe we can double back to talk about reimbursement after you settle on a process.
One thing I like about the one-on-one, I think it's easier to get to know somebody and you have a better conversation. Looking back, when we did interviews, we placed Jerry Lock, and there were some people that actually got intimidated. And I don't think we really got any true meaning of them because of someone sitting in front of us all at one time. It's a chore and you're, you're trying to answer to everybody, where I really like that. You never took a little one, fifteen minutes, half hour, whatever. I really like that because I think it's easier to establish rapport and judge somebody rather than. But that's just me.
You know, the question, they're saying for all your viewers, right?
Individual one, there's a little more flexibility. I give you a fairly detailed list of things that you cannot ask and under any circumstances, but you have some flexibility as far as what you wish to talk about during that individual interview component.
Well, I look back at even the conversation that we had. You know, if it would have been you with all of us and talking about all those things, I don't think you're going to get the same input, the same feeling.
So if you wanted to include that component, then I would suggest probably a, like a noon start or one o'clock start. And then on the first day, probably do the individual interviews that day. Potentially a tour that day as well. And then the next day, have a lunch with, with staff and you, and then the final interviews before the whole council and any other components. I don't, we didn't discuss if you wanted to have some sort of meet and greet function as well. We could do that in the evening of the first day if you wanted to include a public meet and greet function as well, so.
Have any thoughts, Dan, you've been through it as much as anyone.
No, no. I've never been involved in, in the meet and greet thing. I know, I know school districts do that an awful lot, but I've been involved in a lot more. Look, I've been involved in the one-on-one things and the interview with their, you know, full council and stuff. And then the lunches and then, I think it's important for them to have some one-on-one time. Department heads, I'd like to see that. But I haven't. But meet and greet, I don't think you have a lot of people that would necessarily show up for it.
So it depends on what you have.
Yeah, probably. I mean, you have a few people, but I'd be surprised if it'd be too many. You know, I think the school district thing is a little bit different. The teachers and policies and everyone else is showing up. The other thing that Gary and I talked about a little earlier was if you would like any involvement for meeting in this process. I'd be interested in, you know, meeting them and maybe what the department has. I don't think that would be a call interview process necessarily, but I don't know. It's up to you. I could have none. You're not going to hurt my feelings one way or the other, either none or, or some, whatever you'd like to see happen, so.
You've done it for a long time. I trust your expertise and hearing what you have to say.
I'd rather see, I'd do an interview at least.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Right.
Maybe part, be a part of the department head or the tour.
Just sit in on the interview would be fine. Just maybe the back end.
So you're going to take our assets, roll them together, and set it up to us and see what we think of it?
Yeah, let me, let me just feedback what I'm, what I'm initially here. I mean, it's just formulated in my head, like I said, with the individual interviews. Probably do that day, first day, afternoon of the first day and possibly a tour. And then the next day, do the individual, the interview with the full council where they're sitting there and, you know, much more intense, a little more stress. That's okay though. I mean, they have to be comfortable with that environment too. And then probably a lunch, you know, just a lunch in that day, even do it here. I mean, wherever, right? We'd have to work those details out. And then something with the department heads on the second day as well. So I mean, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm formulating. I have to, you know, sit down and figure out, you know, the times for it. But if that sounds acceptable or, you know, decent to you, I can move forward that way. And then just feedback to you a more detailed schedule based on that. Okay. And I, and I just wanted to mention too, I will be, you know, immediately talking to the folks that you, you are bringing in. And I will also be immediately talking to those that you are not, so leave them where they sit as well. So just so you know, that follow-up will be there with everybody. That was initial interview. Well, everybody here, so. Okay. Any, any questions for me? Did we decide on reimbursement?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Thank you. I was ready to move on. So reimbursement, two-day interview process? Do you want to do a one-night hotel or something like that or?
It's a two-day process, I'm pretty sure.
One-night hotel in Little Falls, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. We can.
Or a brand or something.
You know, what we can do is, I'll work with Lori. We could just reserve, you know, five rooms at, at a local motel. And then just let them sign up for it. The bill can just be worked here here.
Or a living deal, do they have access, capability for five?
Depends on when it is.
Right, see.
And so those, so those days would be July 30th and July 31st? Those work, does that still work for everybody?
So there should be some homes that all.
That's a third, it won't work?
I'll be on the last day.
Okay. So with that said, do you wish to modify dates? Actually, if we, the week after that? I'm on vacation, so that would work much better for me.
When you're on vacation and when you're?
When I'm on vacation, I mean, if we're going to be starting this at noon, then that would work eight, that would work. When are you coming back?
August 3rd.
Anybody else have any comments?
I do. I can't do August 5th or 6th. Other suggestions? This is going to get tough.
Don't want to move it up, 22nd, 23rd, huh?
Maybe just.
Go first, will you?
No, it doesn't have to be a Thursday, Friday.
Where are you going, Frank?
20th.
Yeah.
On a Friday, 6th and 7th, and August 3rd, we can't begin.
I can't do the divorce until August 6th.
So. Sound fair?
Friday, Saturday?
I can't for seven, not that it's a difference. I mean, you could do it without me, but.
I could do that. Here, here's the dilemma. You know, I put these dates out in the profile so candidates can kind of lock in those dates. What if one of them has, can't do it? Do we say, sorry, you're out or? Because again, the original dates were the 30th and 31st that were out there from, you know, from the onset.
You mean if we change this date and they couldn't make the date right and set up?
Right. Because it's real tough to bring, I mean, somebody into, with a process like this, it's tough to bring another person in a week later for a. With a process like this, it's tough to bring another person in a week later for a... I mean, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't talked.
But if they're really serious about wanting the job, then they would, they groom in their schedule to do it, I would think.
Well, unless they've got a vacation.
They're not going to Lick yard.
They may go to Alaska or do a few.
I mean, I think under normal circumstances, I would agree that yes, they would make time available. But I mean, if they've got a trip to Europe scheduled, do they cancel that to come to interview?
Well, then we can alternate solution.
So go with the 7th and 8th and of August and...
Is that race weekend though? Or race weekend? Yeah, it's for experience.
We don't change it. I've already taken the 30th and 31st out of vacation news. That was what was on our schedule.
30th, 31st? 49th, 32nd, right? Want to say Thursday?
32nd.
I don't know. What do you think?
I'm good through the end of the year. I think it's all here.
30th. I think there is on his 20th. Some bracket drag racing series in the Ryan School.
But we're gonna use a motel.
Yeah, because Saint Sather said that he tells him pretty much went down for a summer. Because he's from...
That's true. Country decision. I suppose you wouldn't be able to do it via Skype either, you'd have no access up there where you're at, next to the woods to do it. Couldn't do it on one-on-one?
We could, we could set up a, in advance, we could certainly set up a one-on-one telephone if you wanted with each person. Give some input that way and that would be very doable.
Do you have a problem with 30th and 31st?
Oh, there's two conflicts with 30th and 31st?
Yes. So the 7th and 8th would be better.
Okay.
That works. That does work.
The 7th and 8th, Friday, Saturday work.
5th, Sunday.
Okay, so you wanna switch to those days?
Okay.
If we, if we have an issue, we'll punt. I'll be in touch.
Well, there's too many issues. I'd say we can go back to 30th, 31st. That's what all candidates were.
Yeah, that is what we posted. I mean, so again, and that's why I posted in advance is to make sure that people, you know, kind of dial in on those days, so. But there's no harm in trying for the alternate, so. Okay, so we'll shoot for the 7th and 8th. One night, one night lodging, we'll just arrange that locally and stay tuned. And then I will pick up your binders. There's a lot of non-public information in there. And then prior to the final interview, you'll get another one that contains information on each person as well as personality, inventory information and all the background checking that will be done as well. So there'll be that additional information for you, so. Thank you.
Okay, so then we're dealing the 7th and 8th of August?
Yes.
We're providing lodging for the evening?
One night, yes.
Are we paying mileage?
No.
Nope, just lodging, no. It's a vacation.
Is that where to go? All right, thank you. I'll be in touch. Thank you. Onto 2014 audit presentation, Sean and Werner.
Lots of new faces. So those of you that have been on for a while, you might have to bear with us for mine to explain a few. Going to a few more details, but I'll let John to talk.
Okay, I'm John Archer. This is Mary Bockland. We're both managers with Sean and Werner. Both work on your audit together. We're gonna walk through the whole process a little bit here. You should each have two reports. One's gonna be called the financial statements. One's gonna be called the report to the members of governance. We're gonna start with, I think, one, the financial statements first. So if you wanna flip in, we're gonna go to page two. It's actually not numbered, but it's the one before three. It's the one that's on our letterhead. So this is the independent auditor's report. I'm gonna assume that maybe some of you aren't too familiar with an audit. A financial audit, a financial statement for a city, being there's new faces here. So I'll just walk through kind of what this letter is. This is actually probably one of the most important parts of the audit. And the reason for that is because it talks about what an audit is. You can see there's different headers for the different sections on this letter. There's a section that talks about management's responsibility. That's saying that even though we've written up all this information, we've pulled it all together, we've done all this work, it's really yours to be... You've given us the numbers, you've given us the support. Our job, what's talked about in the auditor's responsibility, is that we look at that information on a test basis. So we're not looking at every scrap of paper. We do what we call a risk assessment approach where we think, oh, what's maybe riskier? What's maybe not as risky for transaction cycles? And we try to focus on those riskier areas. The reason we do all that is we wanna be able to give an opinion on whether we think your numbers are correct or not. If you go to the page three, you can see there's a header there that says opinions. What we're giving in this, in this paragraph is what we call an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion, so this is the highest opinion that we can give. This is us saying that we think your numbers are good. So this is what you want. There's a few different options. We can say, we can give this clean opinion, we can say things, everything looks good, except maybe this transaction cycle over here, your receivables are questionable. We can say that things are just totally messed up and we can't give an opinion. You're not getting anything like that. You're getting the good one. We're gonna look at some numbers here now, so we're gonna flip around a little bit. Let's go to page 53. The reason I'm skipping through all of this, I don't want you to feel like you're missing out on a bunch of information here, but there's a lot of narrative in these financials that talks about what are your accounting policies, what are some of the policies behind different transaction cycles, there's some reconciliations. For the interest of time, we're gonna just skip through all of that for now. So page 53 is gonna be your general fund. This is a budget to actual, so we've got your budget in the first column. What actually happened during years in the second column. We've got the revenues, we call it resources or inflows on this page on top. Expenditures, charges, we call it charges to appropriations or outflows kind of on the bottom. So if we look at the revenues first, revenues came in at about $4.7 million. You planned for about $4.6 million, so you're actually $87,000 over budget on the revenue cycle. If we look at the detail here, the bulk of that change is gonna be from your property taxes. They came in higher than you planned for. And your licenses and permanent sales or fees, those came in higher as well. $42,000 for the taxes, $38,000 for the licenses and permits. Intergovernmentals up a little bit too. This is where your local government aid is. This increase is actually just some other state grants that you got. On the expenditure side, expenditures came in at about $4.34 million, $4,354,000. You planned for $4.6 million, so you're actually $275,000 below budget on the expenditure side in the general fund, which is probably good because this is where the bulk of your activity is, is in the general fund. Few things kind of going on here. You can see there's one line that stands out for public works. Public works is $243,000 below budget. There's a few things here. Wages were quite a bit lower. You had some retirements this last year, so you've got some new people coming on, lower salaries. And then you had some purchases that were capitalized as part of your inventory this year. And so that part of your expenditures now too. Overall, your fund balance increased in the general fund by $363,000. It's actually not on this page, but your fund balance at the end of the year is about a million and cap, or almost $1.6 million. You have a policy on what you want that target to be at for what your unrestricted fund balance would be. Your policy is that you've been looking for 35% to 50% of your budgeted expenditures for the fund. Right now, you're coming in at about 28%, so you're just a little bit shy of that. If you have any questions as I'm going through, you can chime in. Let's look, let's look at page 81. We're gonna look at some of the smaller governmental funds and then we're gonna look at some of the, what we call proprietary fund or business stake fund. So this page, page 81, is gonna be causing a redevelopment authority fund. Not a whole lot going on here. You've got some economic development type, or I'm sorry, you've got some property tax levies coming in here that make up the bulk of the revenue. Revenues came in at $78,000. You budgeted $75,000, so you're about $2,600 higher than budget. On the expenditure side, you actually came in quite a bit lower than you planned for. Expenditures were $22,000. You planned for $75,000. You planned for some improvements, $59,000 that didn't happen this year. So that's the main reason for this change. This fund ends the year at $341,000 in fund balance. Go to the next page. I'm gonna move quick here because I don't want to take a long time before the meeting. This is the Heritage Preservation Commission Fund. Heritage Preservation, revenues came in at $22,000. You budgeted for $16,000. Loan repayment makes up kind of the bulk of the numbers here. So you've got some economic development type loans out there and you collect payments on those. We recognize the revenue as you collect the payments. They're a little higher than you planned for. Part of that is because you had an early payoff, not all of it. And so some of them were just, you just had more collections than you planned on. On the expenditure side, expenditures came in at about $1,500. Planned for $16,100, so you're quite a bit below budget on the expenditure side. And that's kind of across the board for all the buckets here. You didn't have a lot of activity this year. Parks and Rec is actually on pages 83 and 84. Parks and Rec, the big difference on revenues is that you planned, you actually received some donations, about almost $50,000 donations that weren't budgeted for. So your revenues are actually almost $60,000 higher than budgeted. We look at the expenditures kind of in broad buckets here. Parks and playground are below budget. Most of that's because of salaries and wages, less spending on salaries and wages. Fall fields came in pretty close to what you planned for. Moving on to page 84. Ice rinks, a little bit higher than you planned for, but overall fairly close. That's mostly because of wages too. And then the other tennis and zoo are pretty close to what you planned for. There's another category here. Park improvement, you've got some expenditures here that you didn't budget for. $142,000 is on here. A little over $100,000 is for that Twitchell playground. That's where these expenditures are coming in to play. So you had received a grant for that last year. This is the expenditures for this year. That fund ends the year at $370,000 in fund balance. Airport operating, pretty quiet year for airport. Sales, fuel sales were a little bit lower than you planned for, so you've got less revenue by about $20,000 or so. You've also got less purchases to go along with it, so kind of makes sense there. That fund ends the year with a decrease in fund balance of $4,000, $25,000 ending fund balance. Okay, water utility fund. The next few funds are gonna be what we call your enterprise funds. They're a little different because they have more of a focus on profitability, operating profitability versus just the day-to-day needs of the citizens. These are expected to sustain themselves instead of being levied for. So looking at the water fund first, water fund revenues came in at about $1.6 million. Customer charges are down a little bit from what you planned on. Investment incomes actually up quite a bit from what you planned on. Last year, you actually had a pretty big decrease in your investment income, so this is kind of recouping that a little bit. Overall, your revenue is pretty close to your budget. You're about $5,800 on. On the expenditure side, the water plant spending came in below budget. Most of that's because of payroll costs. Going a little further power and pumping, that's up a little bit from what you planned on, mostly because repairs and maintenance. Moving on to the next page, page 87. Distribution's up a little bit from what you planned on too. This is payroll. So you've got payrolls down a little bit in one bucket, up a little bit in one bucket. It's how it's allocated. Overall, I'm gonna skip down towards the bottom. You've got an increase in net position, we call it in these funds. It's like your fund balance of $234,000. One thing I should point out, you've got this miscellaneous section kind of towards the bottom. Depreciation's one thing that you don't budget for. That's taking your capital assets. You capitalized a big purchase and then you spread that cost out over however many years you expect it to live for. So let's say you've got a vehicle you purchased. You don't expense that whole vehicle in year one. You're gonna spread that cost over maybe five years or so. That's what this line is. It's something that you don't normally budget for. And then you've got some capital improvements on here too. Waste water funds on page 88. Revenues came in at $1.7 million, down from what you budgeted for by about $76,000. Most of this is because of the pre-treatment plant. So if you remember towards the beginning or mid-2014, you transferred that pre-treatment plant to the Ethnopoa. That had an effect on these numbers, so you're not collecting those service charges anymore. And you're gonna see, actually, if we skip to the next page, under pre-treatment, your pre-treatment expenditures are down about $100,000 budgeted. This is all from that transfer. The other line I wanna point out for wastewater, if you look in the miscellaneous, there's a line that says improvements. That's actually kind of a misleading line. What this number is, is when you transferred that, the plant to the Ethnopoa, you transferred some money along with it. This is that money that was transferred over to Ethnopoa.
So it was basically that savings account that we had to maintain that to return back over two and a half.
Yep, that's correct.
So it wasn't to pay a large amount to take it.
Exactly.
But you had an improvement. As you can see at the bottom of 89, the pre-treatment improvement, second to the last line on the page, is a negative $290 from before that had, you know, hundreds of thousands.
So this fund had a decrease in net position of $740,000. A lot of that is because of this pre-treatment activity. Stormwater is a pretty small fund. That's on page 90. About $5,000 more than budget on the revenue side, mostly because of customer charges. And then on the expenditure side, you budgeted, you can see under stormwater utility, there's a line, purchase of property. You budgeted $22,900. It actually happened. So that's doing your numbers a little bit on this budget to actual. Overall, the fund increased by $37,000. Okay, municipal golf course. This is a fun, there's a lot of new faces here, so I'm gonna give some backstory. This is a fund that we talked about quite a bit over the last few years that we've been... Mary's been doing your audits for a lot longer than I have, but for the last few years that I've been doing your audit. Municipal golf course has had some pretty significant recurring losses in the past. Somewhere the hall parking last year was around $8,000, $9,000 from a loss. This year, you're looking at a loss, that's ahead of page or two, you're looking at a loss of $38,000. Things look a lot better. If you look at these in a little more detail, if you look at your revenues, I'm back on page 91. Revenues came in at $35,000 more than what you planned on. Few reasons for that, when we looked at the golf course... When we looked at the golf course, gross profit was up, which was nice to see. Clubhouse sales were up a little bit, which was nice to see. The biggest reason why this is above budget is because you had to transfer in a twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund. So you made a commitment last year that you were going to help support the golf course with the general fund. That's skewing these numbers a little bit in the budget to actual. That's why your revenue is a higher than you planned on. On the expenditure side, general golf course expenditures on the bottom of this page, about sixteen thousand dollars more than budget. Most of that's payroll. There's a little bit of repairs. Clubhouse, below budget on the clubhouse, that's wages, so this is another one where the wages are allocated a little different than what you planned on. Pro Shop, Pro Shop's above budget, mostly because of equipment purchases. So those would be like your cost of sales for Clubhouse, for Clubhouse activities. And then back on page ninety-three, you can see kind of some of the other activities. So depreciation expenses, one that stands out, we talked a little bit about depreciation Golf improvement is another area that stands out. You actually, this is actually kind of a misleading line a little bit. We had to pull some expenditures out because we capitalized them, and so that's where this is falling into play. So overall, like I said, thirty-eight thousand dollars loss, a lot better than eighty-five thousand dollars last year. Part of that's from beating it from the general fund, but things did look overall better this year, too.
Yes, you were able to contain costs because last year, total expenses were significantly more than this, so cost containment is very important. And if you had this cash flow.
Right.
But your depreciation is a noncash item, that's a big problem, and your loss is different.
Now, even if you add back what you put in from the general fund, you still had, if you back to that, you still had positive cash flow for the golf course operations this year.
Which is a good point.
Page ninety-four, recycling and garbage. This is the last fund we're going to look at. Actually, I hate that back there is one more I'm going to talk about. But recycling and garbage, not a lot of activity in here. Customer charges make up the bulk of the revenues. Revenues are above budget by twenty-three thousand. Expenditures came in at seventy-six hundred dollars above budget as well, so your revenues are up, expenditures are up a little bit, too. This fund increases by fifteen thousand four hundred. Let's jump back to page twenty-one. I normally wouldn't cover this page, but Lori asked me to mention it really briefly here. This page is what we call the statement of fiduciary net position. This is going to be your agency fund. The city has an agency fund set up with a little alliance, a little alliance with the balls. Basically, Lori wanted me to just explain a little bit what's going on here. This money is money that, actually, it really belongs to the Lions. They contribute money to the city, and the city pays some expenses on their behalf. Normally, like I said, I wouldn't talk about this fund because it's really not city money, per se. It's money that just kind of runs through the city. Any questions on that at all? We're going to jump way back towards the back, page one hundred and three. So the few of you that have been through this before, Greg, you don't have to call me out that I forgot. Every year during an audit, I mentioned earlier that when we do our audit, we take a risk-based approach. And part of how we do that is we take a look at your processes and your internal controls to see how you do things. And what we have a requirement to do is if we see something that can be improved on, we're required to report it to you. And so we actually have two findings here. These are findings that you've had for a lot of years, as long as we've had to report this. And it's findings that I think just about every city that we do also has, in probably most small cities in the state. But the first one is talks about segregation of duties. So what this is getting at is because you don't have a separate account for each function, so one person to do cash receipts, one person to do cash payments, one person to do payroll, separate duties for every single person with no overlap, you have what we call a platinum segregation duties. And the reason we have to report it is because it is a risk to you. There is more risk in this type of situation that errors can happen, that fraud could happen, just because you don't have those separate duties. But to mitigate that, you have to do your best to have some checks and balances or mitigating controls in place. So that would be like having someone review the bank reconciliations, the council looking at the bills, looking at the goal. Those are activities that help mitigate those risks. So it's a common finding, something that I think just about every small city in the state has, but it's something that we can have to talk about. Other thing that we're reporting on here, financial reporting. What we're saying here is that, basically, we're saying that we've written up this book for you. And really, this is only a finding when you don't have a person on staff that can write it themselves. If you think about a perfect world for auditing, we'd come in, we'd look over the numbers, we'd say everything looks good. On day one, you'd hand us this hundred-page report, we'd look it over and say, that looks good, too, and that would be the audit. But because you don't have someone on staff that can write this all up, we have to have somebody to report.
It really all needs a CPA level, because there's quite a number of prescribed formats and things like that.
Didn't even take that further. A CPA that specializes in going.
Plus, there's a timeout to it as well.
So nothing unusual here, these are both very common. On the next page here, there's a report on compliance with Minnesota statutes. Every year, the state auditor comes out with a series of checklists of different statutes they want us to look at to make sure you're in compliance with them. And this is saying that we had no findings on it, that everything was good.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, let's talk just really briefly on the other report. It won't take very long. So let's just flip into page two. I'm just going to run through the punch list. This, the report we just went through is going to be the financials, and that talks about the numbers. This talks, this report talks about how did the audit go? So it's a little bit different approach. And you're going to hear me say no a lot because there weren't really any issues, but I'm just going to run through the punch list here, especially since we've got some new people. It talks about if we have any issues with your accounting policies, or if you adopted any new accounting policies, did you see any unusual or significant transactions? Do we talk with Lori or management about alternative ways to account for things? No issues with any of that. It talks a little bit about estimates, the fact that there's some estimates in the financials. We talked about depreciation earlier, and that's an estimate because it's your guess as much as mine, how long that truck is really going to last. Is it going to last five years, or are you going to hang on for fifteen? So that's an estimate. It talks about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So what we're talking about there is, when I was talking about the opinion and that clean opinion you can get, you get, that you receive, in reality, we don't give a lot of bad opinions. And the reason for that is because if we see something that needs to be fixed, if something looks really unusual, or something looks like it's in the wrong home, we're going to fix it ourselves, and then we're going to get into that clean opinion. But if we fix it ourselves, we're going to report that in this book here. We didn't have any significant adjustments that we, or adjustments that we'd call materials in the audit, so not really anything like that going on. We did have what we call an uncorrected misstatement. And what that is, is if you have something that's really pretty minor in the scope of things, we can pass on adjusting that and still give our clean opinion. And you had, you had a pass adjustment or two pass adjustments, actually. One's related to inventory pricing of the golf course that we're going to talk about in just a few seconds here. The other one's talking about a land sale that was put into the wrong period. They were both pretty minor. Disagreements with management, significant issues, difficulties, no issues with any of that either. We look at the last two pages here. This is what we call the management letter. And this is actually not a required part of the audit. This is something that we do kind of to add value to the audit. So what we do is if we see something that can be improved on, or something that maybe we would move differently, this is our spot report. You can think of it more like, or take it or leave it advice, I suppose. And a little history here, this management letter for the city is pretty much focused on the golf course in the past, and it's going to focus on the golf course this year, too, that I want to update you, talked a little bit about it already, about how the golf course looked for us this year. Golf course operations, we kind of talked about this already, looking a lot better. Golf course right now is sitting at a deficit cash balance, or negative cash balance of about five hundred twenty thousand dollars. We'd like to see you work on a plan on trying to reduce that or eliminate that. Obviously, being profitable or not having a loss would be the most, maybe probably the best way, but if that's not feasible, maybe working out some kind of a interfund payment plan or a loan transfer, some way to try to get rid of that deficit cash balance and keep it positive. Golf course inventory, this is something we've had for the last few years. When we went through our audit testing, we noticed that the golf course inventory wasn't carried at its actual true cost. And so if you think about what an item that you purchase costs, it's going to cost what you paid for it, plus the freight that you paid for it, and it's going to be adjusted as that price changes. But what we found was that the cost in some of the golf course inventory didn't have freight charges included, or maybe the price changed and you kept buying it, but you never adjusted your price from when you bought it a year or two before. That's where that misstatement that I talked about, that pass adjustment came into play. Overall, it was around five thousand dollars. We projected that it was off, so nothing significant, but you may want to work on your pricing in the golf course. On the last page, we noticed some record-keeping things on the golf course. What we did was we took an invoice from a tournament that happened last year. We tried to keep our procedures a little unpredictable, so we tried to mix things up every year. This year, we decided to take an invoice from a tournament, walk it through the whole site, so what did the invoice say the sale was? How much cash was deposited from that, from that sale? And then what cleared the bank reconciliation? What we found was that the invoice didn't match the deposit, and the reason for that is what it looks like is tips were taken out. But what we're recommending is that you hang on to all those invoices, and you leave a really clear trail on the tips being taken out on those tournaments. That's all I have. I threw a lot of numbers at you really fast, so...
Anybody have any questions for either of you? No, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, we received today an unrelated operation of the golf course, but it is related, not to the audit of the golf course, but it is related to the operation. Randy Bankin submitted his resignation today as our golf course superintendent. He says he's received an opportunity to return to the southwest part of the state, which is their home, and is looking forward to doing that. So his last day as an employee would be August twenty-third. I wonder, he's got a lot of vacation time and stuff built up, so his actual last work day is July the seventeenth, which is about two weeks away. So Greg and I will be talking, Lori will be talking about that, and Randy's out with me with us and talk about the transition plan, so we'll work on that. So changes at the golf course, and we've already talked about the possibility of rebranding the course, maybe changing the name and all, a new manager as well, so some things happening with our golf course. That should be added to the, probably to the consent calendar, if you're okay with that, just to accept your resignation of Randy Bankin.